All right, Michelle, is everything ready over there?
I'm ready.
Okay. With that, I will go ahead and call to order the Thursday, January 9th, 2020, Happy New Year, everyone, meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And first thing I'll do is ask everyone to rise and join Commissioner Olivas in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Michelle, can I have roll call, please?
Okay. Kathleen Taylor is absent. Peter Gower?
Here.
Ed Hawkins?
Here.
John Marshall is absent. Paul Olivas?
Here.
Alex Velto? Mark Johnson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. And for those of you in the audience wishing to comment on this or any other item, please see Michelle and fill out one of these forms. I have a couple under this item. The first from Tammy Holstel.
Good evening, Tammy Holstel, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. Happy New Year. Not on good circumstances, however. You have three before you today, three different items for Ward 4. They're all going to be zone changes. They're all trying to do something that has issues with a valley that is still flooded. That you guys know that there's issues and have not been addressed properly yet. So let's start with, first of all, staff wants you to approve all these. But something you need to think about before staff comes before you, they want to put it all into the shave program. Well, council has told them they could only use 15% of the shave program for new development. Has the staff given you any indication of how much of the shave program they have already issued since December of 2018, when Mr. McKenzie came before the council on logistics Phase 4, when the shave program came into being? I don't think they have. They weren't honest when and forthright in when they told you about how much room there was in the sewer plant to begin with. And I think that they're over or underestimating and overusing the shave program instead of using the shave program for what the council wanted, which is that over 75% of that shave was to cut down the 2.5 million that is going into Swan Lake. Let's not forget also, which you'll hear about again later, the fact that no matter how many detention or retention ponds they use, it all has to be released within seven days. In the wintertime, when we have our precipitation, does water evaporate in seven days? So you have all of these big, huge retention ponds letting go in seven days at the same time in a lake that's already full because nothing can evaporate. So you have questions that you definitely need to ask the staff. They have been pushed to say, approve these, approve these. And there are other things we need other than industry out there. All we have is a Walmart, a Smiths, and a Rayleigh's. We only have one real sit-down restaurant. There are other amenities that need to be done other than warehousing. And those create jobs also. Warehousing is enough for the time being. Leave it the way it is, but nothing should be done until you have fixed the situation with the flooding of Swan Lake. And you get the right answers from the staff before you move forward. It all lies on your shoulders. We've already proven that staff has not been truthful through court. The Supreme Court even ruled against the city of Reno. Do you guys really want to be in that position to see more people suffer?
Thank you. Next is Tim Fata.
Well, Happy New Year. Tim Fata, for the record, resident of Washoe County since 1963. It's a pleasure to speak with you again. Tammy's hit a lot of the points, but you guys are a commission and a planning commission, are you not? Is that your job? You're to help plan? And we have a regional plan. And what's coming before you, I'm sure that all of the staff is going to say, this fits in the plan, it works, everything's there. But the plan has not been working because you've approved so many projects. The infrastructure's not there. The roads are terrible and the roads have traffic problems so bad now, I don't even want to get up and try to leave my house until after nine o'clock in the morning. We don't have a sewer system that's working. We don't have a storm system that's working. And we have a flooded area. Again, what are we going to do? You guys, you know the old adage, you put the cart before the horse? The horse died a long time ago. The cart's got flat tires. And now if you go approve these things, you're going to knock the wheels off of that cart because you're not doing what you should be doing. If you're going to do a regional plan, plan it. Let the develop, let the roads get fixed. Let the sewer get fixed the way you've been hearing for two and a half years. Get us some storm drains that function and are not holding ponds. Get those things done, then go ahead and change zoning if it need be. But nothing needs to be changed at this time, other than stop all this crazy building, stop everything else, until we get something taken care of and repaired. You have issues on your plate now with this water, the floodwater and that, that aren't resolved. It's like you're building a house. And well, this doesn't fit just right, so I'll just cut a little corner here. Okay, you did that. We're just cutting that corner. Now you're going to go and approve something else. Now you build the next board, but it doesn't fit right either. And by the time you get the house built, it's all out of kilter and it's got a little whack. All because you didn't take care of the first problem. You guys need to take care of the first problem. The problems are there. You know what they're there. Resolve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Danny Kleas.
Danny Kleas, for the record. For three years, that valley has been flooded now. Two and a half years coming in front of y'all. Nothing seems to change. So instead of doing what everybody else is doing, I'm going to say, build it. Build the hell out of it. Keep going. Lawyers need time in court. Now, I got a question for you. I know you can't answer it right now. But this is a simple one. Say a developer comes in, wants to develop on that silty clay soil that we have out there in the valley that seems to hold water very well. And they want to put above-ground leach fields. Now would the city of Reno planning approve that? Just a question for thought. Because I know somebody that asked that question or told that that's what they wanted to do out there. But like I said, keep building. You'll flood us. We'll sue you. It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Denise Ross.
Happy New Year, Denise Ross. Traffic, 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 more traffic. Every single warehouse, every single house brings more traffic. Anybody that drives out there, anybody that even listens to the news, hears day after day after day about the traffic issues that are not solved out there. Building keeps continuing on and continuing on. You guys are the first step to say no to it. Then the city council, most of the time, ends up overriding you. But at least you can do your part and stand up to it and say no. Many times, over and over and over, we have proved that the traffic engineer that submits the reports to you guys for the development, whether it be a warehouse or a housing development, are fudged. They're usually done on a holiday. They're done when school's not in. They're done whenever it's not a workday. Please keep that in mind whenever you read the studies about how there's going to be no impact to the North Valleys. Every single developer, every single building out there has stood here and told you guys that there'll be no traffic impacts, that they're going to fix 395 and that that'll be fixed before you allow anybody else, before anything gets completed. You guys know it's not true. Think about it. You know it's not true. You know what the truth is. You can see with your eyes, you can hear with your ears. Use your brains. Please. Use your voices. Say no. It's got to stop somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any more request-to-speak forms on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay. And I will move on to item four, approval of the minutes from the Reno City Planning Commission meeting on December 5th, 2019. Mr. Chairman, move to approve. Yeah, motion of approval. Looking for a second.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public hearings. First item is case number LDC 20-00022, Majestic Liberty Zone Change. And we'll start with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Rormeyer, for the record. I'm here tonight with Majestic Realty Company, and we're presenting the North Valley Industrial Zoning Map Amendment. So this project came before you in December, and we're back. There was a noticing error. We've requested a zone change from mixed-use North Virginia Street Transit Corridor overlay to industrial-commercial for three vacant parcels totaling just under 35 acres. These parcels front North Virginia Street. They are master-planned for mixed employment, and we feel that the industrial-commercial zone brings that into conformance with the master plan. It also offers the flexibility and more building orientation and site layout options, which is what we're going to discuss in Agenda Item 5.2. And lastly, I just want to say that the current zoning, mixed-use, allows for the similar uses as the industrial-commercial. So the use that we're proposing would be allowed in both conditions, but industrial-commercial offers more flexibility. So I'm available for questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll get a presentation from staff. Sorry, Kyle. I didn't know you had to wait for me to let you come up here for that.
Thank you, Chair Johnson and Commissioners Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. I really, I went through this PowerPoint previously in December, if you remember this item. I really don't have anything to add. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation. And I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, before I open this up for public comment, I will ask Commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, no new disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins, visit the site again, talk to one resident, as well as emails.
Commissioner Velto, no new, or I met with the applicant as well as read emails and then visited the site previously.
Commissioner Johnson met with the applicant's representative and read emails.
Commissioner Olivas spoke with the applicant's representative, received emails, and previously visited the site.
With that, I will open up public comment on this item. I have several request-to-speak forms, starting with Tammy Holstel.
As you see before you, this has to do with the affluent that goes into Swan Lake. As you can see, from September to May, it ends up being 2,067 acre feet. This does not include any stormwater runoff. As of June of 2018, during the trial, it was noted that the city has over 3,000 acres of impervious ground. Based on what the internet says on information for acreage, it's 1,800 acres. But when you talk to Washoe County staff, it's only 1,600 acres. So as of June of 2018, there wasn't as many apartments, there wasn't as many warehouses along the Virginia Corridor or on Military Road in Lemon Drive. So you add in all that acreage to that 3,000 that was already out there. That's over double what Swan Lake is. Besides what you're putting in by the city of Reno. And I go back to, again, one of the things you need to be asking staff, they were not truthful with you way back in 2017, when I started this process, about their amount of connections that they had available to the Sted sewer plant. Now they're telling you they have all of this room available through the transferring to Tom Wharf. Well, if they keep telling you, and every single one of them, from 2018, December of 2018 to current, that it's going to be going, the sledge is going to move the other direction and not go to the Sted sewer plant, how many connections is that? How much percentage are they using? They were direct, staff was directed by council. Only 15% of new applications were going to go through that line. I bet you right now, it's at 50%. And it is on you to get the correct answers. I am formally, publicly, asking for that information from staff right now. It will be put in writing also, and it will be detailed out. I will be asking for each approved one, when it's going online, how much is going to be used, to see how close we are to that 15%. Because I can tell you right now, based on past performance from staff, city staff, you're not getting the answers. None of us are. And it's been proven. Whenever they had to do the emergency allocation because they overextended themselves. You guys need to be aware of that. It is your job to say yes or no. And it's your job to make them give you the information. Thank you.
Next is Mara Felix.
Good evening. My name is Mara Felix. I'm the owner of 2160 Seneca Drive. First, I would like to thank you all for the service that you give to the community and for the opportunity that is given us to express our concerns as residents in the face of that disadvantage that we have. Our concerns contradict the plans or big firms in projects that do not benefit our neighborhoods. Ma'am, we bought a house in 2017, the same year that the city of Reno made public a master plan for our zone, in which one of the main purpose and goals was, quote, "to establish communities that create a sense of place and community for residents." We are concerned now with two proposals for this area. The first one's the change of the zone, using a special permit in the order to build two warehouses, distribution buildings, adjacent to our established residential community. This project will leave more than 100 properties without the opportunity to experience residential growth. No longer will community developments grow alongside them. The proposed industrial buildings will diminish the entrance to residential feel of our community. We believe this will also rig, rig, decreasing, increasing the value of our home and others in the neighborhood because they will be overshadowed by a large industrial facility that will become the most visible landmark seen on the stretch of road where North Virginia intersect with Seneca. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Boilingbroke.
Hi, my name is David Boilingbroke. I'm a PhD candidate in environmental history at Washington State University. I'm also a community member. I grew up in Reno, and now I've recently moved back. And I'm also a resident at the house with my mother-in-law and my father-in-law, of Mara Felix and Rolafa Garcia. So I'd also like to talk about the permit zoning change. One of the things that we're most concerned about is that it will take away from a sense of residential community that we have. I went around the neighborhood recently and talked to neighbors, and some of them have been around for 30, 40 years that they've been homeowners. And now they're seeing all these vast changes and all this new development come in. And it's quite difficult in the sense that it makes it feel less like the community that they've known and that we've known, and more like an industrial kind of area. And we understand that, like, there are a lot of industrial facilities that already exist, but we're particularly concerned with the North Valley Industrial Building, one that's going to be built because it is directly, and I mean directly, adjacent to our home on 2160. Let me put up this diagram here. So as you can see, here we have the proposed zoning change. The blue is my mother and father-in-law's property, and it is right up against what's going to become Commercial Industrial Zone, and it's currently mixed-use. And so what we're really concerned about is that people come in and turn left on Seneca and come into our neighborhood is that it's going to affect the value of the home and the property when it's overshadowed by constructed by industrial buildings that are much larger than the home and sitting up directly alongside it. So in the Reno Master Plan of 2017, the city master plan, goal number four says that one of the ways that we establish community is by featuring pedestrian-oriented characteristics that create a sense of place and community. So we're afraid that by making this zone change, that our community is going to be hindered in the way that it can develop further, and it's no longer going to feel like an industrial, like a residential place where your children can feel comfortable in the backyard, where you can look outside and see the sunlight coming into your home, and where you can have neighbors and growth around you in a positive manner. So those are our most pressing concerns when it comes to the zoning change. And it's really going to have a negative effect on the community and also our home on Seneca Drive. So we please ask that would the city take our concerns into consideration? We're not, we're not opposed to development in general, but this specific development's going to have very negative effects on our home and family and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any additional request-to-speak forms on this item?
Not on this item.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Yeah, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Velto.
Kyle, a question for you. I think we touched on this last time this was before us, but can you explain some of the differences between mixed-use and industrial-commercial? And what projects would presently be available with the way it's zoned, with what would happen if it were changed?
Sure. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. So one of the, one of the primary differences between mixed-use zones and industrial, or industrial-commercial in this case, is that mixed-use typically allows for residential uses and typically high-density residential. So under the current zoning, a high-density residential with, you know, unlimited height in this zone could be built. Does that answer your question?
It does. And could you tell me, kind of, so some of the issues that were raised were flooding and traffic. How might flooding and traffic be affected under projects that are pleasantly available?
So typically, and it obviously all depends on the size of a project, but typically, and applicants, traffic engineers here probably could clarify, but typically residential and specifically multifamily generates more traffic than industrial uses. From a, from a storm drain or from a drainage perspective, it's all going to be, it's one in the same. It's, they're going to have to mitigate the same amount of drainage in either case.
Mr. Gower.
Kyle, just to build on what Commissioner Velto was asking, we've got an item coming up next. And Kyle, first question, we've already seen this, right? And we've already voted on this. We're just seeing this again because it's a noticing issue?
Yeah, that's correct. There was a technicality and a noticing error that we discovered after the hearing. And so it has to come back for a decision that previous decisions void.
Okay. And the previous decision?
Recommendation, yeah.
The previous recommendation to city council was unanimous for the zone change, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then the second part, so we're going to see an item coming up next with an industrial-type use. Could that use occur under the current zoning also?
The use, yes.
Yes.
It's been proposed as a warehouse use.
So that?
That is allowed in the current zone, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll follow up on that then, too, Kyle. And this may be one for the applicant. If the use that's proposed, that we haven't technically seen yet, is allowable under the current zone, why, what's, what is the rationale behind asking for the zone change? Is it a scale issue? Is it an orientation issue? Is it a, you know, what would be the reason, at least from the city standpoint, doing that?
So there's lots of different nuances between the two zones as far as site design, building design, landscaping standards. Pretty much all the design standards are different between the current zone and what's proposed. And so it's my understanding that because of those considerations is why they're requesting change the zoning.
Okay. So then, I guess, following, the final question that I'm seeing on that is, if the zone change did not occur and the project, as it's, you know, indicated is an industrial use, was proposed for the mixed-use site, would it still require a special use permit?
Yes. Under the way, under the current design, it would because there is a grading, it exceeds the code-alowed grading threshold.
Actually, let me, yeah, so I'm, 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 yeah, I guess I'm looking at the, so regardless, any project that has a cuts-and-fills issue is going to be a special use permit. That happens regardless. What I'm looking at more is the use. Is there some, you know, is it possible that if this was a different site plan and different, you know, taking that not into consideration if there was no project involved whatsoever? If somebody wanted to build a warehouse use on a parcel-zoned mixed-use in this North Valley's Transit Corridor, taking any of the other mandatory ones out, if it was just purely by use and purely by residential adjacency, would they still have to come in for a special use permit? Or is it purely permitted by right because it's in the mixed-use district?
It, yeah, they would be able to go straight to permit under that situation that you just explained. So residential adjacency does not apply to the current mixed-use zone. I think that's what you're?
That's, that's what I'm going, so there's the?
Or let me, let me, let me just clarify. Residential adjacency standards apply, but a special use permit requirement for residential adjacency does not apply in the current zone.
And that, that was what I was going for, because I understand, I understand grading issues and I understand some of the other things that kick in a special use permit. But one of the questions, and I believe I brought this up a time before, is it is possible, based on the current zoning, to build an industrial-commercial project, as long as it meets code and meets the setbacks, without having to come before this body? without having to come before this body. It goes directly to building permit.
That's correct.
Okay. So, under the potential zone change that we're looking at here, if that zone change is enacted, regardless of any of the other conditions with cuts and fills or residential adjacent, because of the residential adjacency, it has to come in for review for special use permit and can be conditioned by this body and city?
That's correct. And just to add to that, to any of the residential uses that I mentioned previously under the current zoning that are allowed, would also not trigger a special use permit. They're all allowed by right.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? Comments or discussion? Or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion. I'm assuming your silence is...
I'm sorry, please, I'm ready, I asked for a motion if you're willing to make it.
Okay.
Apparently, I'm not talking as much this year as I did past years. Everybody's waiting for me to comment. I'm trying to dial it back a little.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case of LDC 20-00020, Majestic Liberty Zone Change, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings now as I could a month ago.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second?
I have a motion from Commissioner Gower, second from Commissioner Veltow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Recommendation to council is approved unanimously, which moves us on to the next item. On the same site, case number LDC 20-00030, Majestic Liberty. And we will once again start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I'm going to ask Kerry to come up in a moment and probably do a better job than I do on introducing the project. But I did want to take a brief minute and just introduce myself. My name, for the record, is Brett Tremaine. I'm the managing partner at Majestic out of our corporate offices in Los Angeles. So, Mr. Chairman and all the members, thank you for hearing the application. We appreciate your service. Happy New Year. I know it's difficult because we had to hear that same zoning twice, so I appreciate your consideration. Before we jump in, I just wanted to thank your staff. We develop in a lot of cities around the country, and we're in front of a lot of public hearings, but your staff's been very good. They've helped us. We're new to the city, and they've helped us a great deal. Angela, you've been helpful, and Kyle, and Frank in engineering. So I just wanted to let the commissioners know, you've got very good people in your city here, so, thank you. A brief introduction. We're a national developer. We have offices throughout the United States. We started in 1948, but we're a family-owned and family-operated company. And we own the same buildings that literally we built in the 50s and 60s we own today. We're very different than a lot of our competitors that build buildings and sell them. You'll know that in our 85 million square feet, which is spread throughout the United States, we take a lot of time and a lot of energy to really maintain our buildings in the best of class. And as a result of that, we maintain our tenant base, and there will be an exhibit here, you want me to do this, right here. This is giving you an example of just a number of the companies we have, very small example, but a lot of the Fortune 500 companies we have under roof throughout the United States. These are, you know, large brands. You can see Dollar General, IKEA, Mattel, Mercedes-Benz. And we work very hard to manage those tenants and the relationships. And we often do transactions in multiple cities. So, it's helpful, and we treat those tenants like our customers, and they're the lifeblood of our company. So with that, we invest a lot in the communities that we're in, and we're also not an entity that will be selling our properties. So our goal is to be here in the Reno market. We've identified it as a place to be, and this is our first project, but we hope it's the first project of many. So, we have our consultants here. If there's any technical questions, I'm certainly happy to come up back to the podium and address any questions that may come up from the public or any of the commissioners. So, I'm going to turn that over to Kerry. Thank you.
Taller than I am. Thanks, Brett. It's nice to see what Majestic has done elsewhere. There's some of their markets that they're working in currently. I'm here to tell you about the special use permit that's on the agenda item tonight. We're looking at a request for an SUP for residential adjacency and cuts and fills. Now that the site has been recommended for approval for a zone change by City Council, this allows us to get into the actual site design. So, Majestic and Tectonics Design Group have spent a lot of time figuring out the proper orientation and placement of buildings to really make this the best project possible at this location. And that's really centered around an interior truck court. So the large buildings are going to buffer the truck activity, and all vehicular and truck activity come directly off North Virginia Street. So we will not be putting any additional trips on Seneca Drive. This is an independent project. The trucks will be entering through that centermost driveway, and then there's an additional vehicular access to the west, but that is purely for employees to park around the perimeter of the buildings. There's 108 semi-truck trailer parking areas, and then 401 vehicle spaces. The two buildings combined are 516,560 square feet. These are going to be state-of-the-art warehouse logistics buildings with office as an ancillary use. There's going to be over an acre of new landscaping, which isn't present today. The three stormwater detention basins, which are on the North Virginia Street front, are designed to the city's 1.3 to 1 ratio for retention. And the policy of this, of Majestic, is to do routine maintenance of those detention facilities. We're working with the city to craft and introduce smart trip LIDs, according to the RTC plans. And to take a look at the buildings, they have been architecturally designed not only for articulation, but to fit in with the desert landscape. So, the palette is desert colors of topes and tans. And all of the views that you'll see from North Virginia, either from the rear or from the east or west, have no truck docks. All of that is interior. So it's really a great design for this location. This is the landscape plan. Now, most industrial, the code only requires landscaping in the front yard setback. We are providing landscape on all four sides, including enhanced landscape on the east and the west perimeters for residential adjacency. And we have worked with Kyle and Frank to come up with a cross-section. So if you look at the little figure below, there's two tan areas. Those areas are closest proximity to the neighboring residents, and with the grading activities, we're proposing 20 lineal feet of non-disturbance for grading, a gentle slope, a rock wall terraced with a large mature tree, an additional rock wall, and then the six-foot solid masonry wall. And then, in that figure below, I show two green lines. Now, those, we're going to be asking, just in full disclosure, if we can get approval from the neighbors, to do a minor deviation, to do enhanced vegetation. And the enhanced vegetation not only looks better, but it will eliminate people, the opportunities for vandalism or graffiti in those locations. So that's something we'd be looking forward to doing in the future, following approval of an SUP. But one thing that came up in the zoning question is that by going to the IC zone with the SUP for residential adjacency, you actually are getting increased building setbacks. So the MU would not be requiring quite as much of a distance between property line and the proposed buildings. So it's 118 and a half feet on the west side, and 85 feet on the east side, which is considerable distance. And then the last, I just wanted to point out, and we've been working with Kyle and Planning Manager Angela Foose, to reword two of the conditions. Number 13, just to reword, prior to the issuance of a site improvement permit, the applicant shall provide plans demonstrating that features of the Regional Transportation Commission Smart Trips program are incorporated into the project. And then number six, so we really, with number six, just want to emphasize that at all times of the day, truck activity will be strictly regulated to that interior truck court and nowhere else on the project site. Really want to thank staff and the Planning Commission for reviewing this project, and we're available for questions. We concur with all other conditions of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. We'll call you back with questions after we get a presentation from staff.
Sounds good.
Is it better this time, Kyle?
Thank you, Commissioners. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the record. So Kerry gave a really good overview of the project. You have just under a 35-acre site on North Virginia Street, three parcels. It's highlighted in blue on your screen. What we have here is two requests, a request for a special use permit for residential adjacency, and also grading cuts and fills. Currently, the, as we just heard, the project's currently zoned MU and VTC. And so this, per condition number five that's recommended in the staff report, this project would be subject to the approval of that zone change. The key issue here, obviously, is impacts to adjacent residences. So here's a little ortho-view of the site with the adjacent residential properties highlighted in blue. There's other residences in the area, but the ones highlighted in blue are the adjacent residential properties. Here is a picture of the site plan. As you can see, the two primary access points are off North Virginia Street. There's no access proposed from Seneca Drive. The buildings are oriented north-south, with all the truck docks located in the middle. As Kerry mentioned, that does provide a very substantial noise mitigation measure for any truck activities because these buildings will essentially not be visible from the adjacent residences. Oops, wrong title up here, sorry. This is the whole landscape plan of the site. I just want to pinpoint a couple things. So, the existing grade adjacent to the residences, this property slopes downward from north to south, and then towards the middle of the site, around here where that pink line is, slopes back upward. And so, it's got some interesting topography. And so, as Kerry mentioned in her presentation, they're proposing a wall along, I highlighted it in pink here, or kind of a, I don't know, maroon color. That's where they're proposing wall. I do want to let you know that a six-foot solid wall is required on all adjacent property, adjacent property lines to residential zones. So a six-foot solid wall is required here on the east and here on the west. They are proposing about half of the western boundary to be wall, and the reason for that, they can explain further if you need clarification, but is because of that grade, it slopes downward. It's, the pad sits above the grade of the adjacent residence, and so, and I'll get a little bit more detail on the next slide, but it's essentially to help screen that residence from the parking area. As you can see from this slide, there is parking facing this residence. On this side, there is not. And so they're proposing no wall on this side, and a wall in pink here. In lieu of that, they've provided landscape plans that demonstrate a heavy groupings of evergreen trees, the majority of which are 10-foot-tall evergreens, provides a pretty substantial visual screening. And the next slide, this cross-section will kind of demonstrate that a little better. So you can see here, this is the western boundary, and so you can see that there are vehicles that are oriented on that parking lot to the west. On the eastern, they're oriented inward. And so, with those evergreen plantings and that, as the, let me go back to the previous slide, as the slight, the slope slopes upward on the southern end of the site, a birmingham or landscaping makes more sense down there than really a tall end wall because of the grade. So, for these, these fill areas that are near the residential, the applicant, we worked with the applicant, and they have designed it in such a way that provides the most aesthetic value for the project by doing tiered landscape benches, rather than just a straight two-to-one slope, which provides a break in visual aesthetics, and provides some relief. And also, those benches are where those evergreen trees would be, so it provides a additional screening along those boundaries. As applicant's representative mentioned, there's, on the west boundary, a setback of about 118 feet, which is, exceeds the three-to-one requirement for residential adjacency, or height-to-setback requirement for residential adjacency. The eastern boundary is, the three-to-one is met. And then, there's even additional distance between the residents. I do want to note that, and I kind of mentioned this previously, that that wall is required on those two boundaries. And so, in order for, there is a process, a minor deviation process, that would allow them to modify that requirement. And that's an administrative approval, so it's not a decision that the Planning Commission would make here, but that's the process. I do, also, you'll see that bullet requires approval from all abutting owners. So if those, owners of those properties that are directly affected do not agree, then, and they don't sign off on it, then we don't accept the application. Here's a picture of the grading plan, kind of showing the cut-and-fills areas of the site. You can see a good portion of the accessways, the sidewalks along the front edge and the buildings, and just a small part of, I believe that's, I believe that's fill, or that's cut, excuse me, a small part of cut that exceeds the thresholds on the rear to accommodate that drive aisle. And so, with that, we have received, or I have received, two comments in support of the project and one in opposition of the request. This was scheduled for the December 12 NAB meeting, but it was canceled, and I have not received any comments. With that said, staff was able to make all the general SUP findings and the SUP findings for cuts and fills, and recommends the Planning Commission approve the project. I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you, Kyle. We'll call you back with questions shortly. Before we start with public comment, once again, I'll ask for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I have visited the site. I received an email and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson asked, did I?
Commissioner Veltow, the same.
Commissioner Hawkins asked, did I?
Commissioner Gower received and read the emails.
With that, I'm going to open up public comment on this item. First public comment card I have is from Tammy Holtstill.
Tammy Holtstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. Sounds nice. Sounds like it might be an asset. But, it goes back to, do we really need another warehouse? Even goes back further than that. All of the water that comes off of that building, off of all of that impervious ground, will be going straight to Swan Lake at some point, without evaporation. There has been no answers to that. There has been nothing to fix the situation. And let's go back also to, nobody addressed the fact that they want to use the shave program for it. Did staff anywhere talk about the shave program and how it fits into the shave program, and that there's plenty of room for it, that it's within the 15% of it? No, you didn't hear that. Why not? No, you didn't hear that. Why not? Because it's probably over the 15% already. Folks, until you fix the situation, staff and you and council should not be approving anything. The mitigation of 1 to 1.3 does not do any good when that 1.3 in seven days is going to Swan Lake in the wintertime when there's no evaporation. It's proven. It's there. It's tangible. You can see it. We have HESCO barriers. We have tiger dams all the way around the lake to protect the citizens from your development. How much more do we have to go through? How many times do we have to be here to say, wait a minute, pump the brakes? I'm sorry for these folks because they want to try and do something good. I'm sorry, I don't think it's good enough because of the fact that it's another warehouse. And there's minimal shopping, minimal fine dining, minimal entertainment. And the city of Reno should be looking at making this because it is a residential area. It is the north valleys. You want to develop out there. You want people out there, but you're not promoting getting the proper things out there. It's all coming back to money. I'm sorry, it doesn't work. Fix Swan Lake before you go any further.
Next is Mara Felix.
I have a broken English, but I'm more nervous for this project than for being here tonight. So my husband and I, biggest concerns is that we are going to be directly affected with this project. We had made plans for our retirement when we bought this house. And we invest all our savings, more than $50,000 in the backyard and inside of the house. To increase the value of the house, I have begun initiating plans to expand development in our 1.5 acre land. Now our plans will be diminished as our land will end up being encased by the construction of this project. They offered me $5,000 to improve my backyard because it's so pretty now. But how much they can pay me for the view, how much they can pay me for the privacy? Because now I have to close my windows of my bathroom or my bedrooms because now I can see the cars beside the view of the sky. We will find ourselves affected in many ways. Our view, the noise, our privacy, drainage problems due to the high platform where the construction will take place. Lack of the sun caused by the high of the buildings in their proximity. In that way, our house is positioned as places so many concern for these projects. Worse of all, my husband, who is disabled and suffered from severe arthritis due to injuries sustained with a drunk driver initiated a terrible car accident, will face more hazardous conditions with increased snow and ice caused by the shade, reduced by the high and closeness of the proposed buildings. We please ask that you reconsider the project and make changes for the benefit of our family and for our community. Thank you.
David Bolinbrook.
Hi, David Bolinbrook again. So I wanted to go over some before and after images that are up to scale that will show how the residency at 2160 Seneca will be affected by the placement of the industrial building. So I'm going to go through these as quick as I can. These were done by a registered architect, so they are up to scale. This is from the second story of our home on Seneca, looking out the bathroom window to the south. That is how it looks now. And now I'm going to show an overlay with the building in place. From the designs, the building designs that are available to the public for what the construction will be like. Okay, so as you can see here, we've overlaid with the parking lot and the height of the building. And that's what we will be looking at out of our back window. So basically, we'll be looking at the building and nothing else. So it'll definitely affect the view of this adjacent residency. Let me show you another one here. So here's looking out, this is looking out my in-laws' master bedroom window towards the southwest. That's what it looks like now. Here's what it's going to look like with the building in place. So because the building slopes downward, not as extreme, but still very much in view of the adjacent residency. This is looking from the corner of Seneca and Virginia as you're turning left onto Seneca Street. And here is what you will be able to see once the building, the walls and such are put into play. And so as you can see, what we're really worried about with the entrance to the residential community is that this is what you will see when you enter the community instead of seeing our home and the other houses in the background. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about is concerns we have over water drainage. And I think other people have been discussing potential problems with flooding. And it's a very real concern for us because of how close we are to the facility. So we can see the drainage pond is here. And there's a corridor, because it slopes downward, my hand's kind of getting in the way. But you guys can see the arrows, so it's a 40-feet drop as you come down the slope. And the water's designed to drain down that corridor alongside the wall and then into that drainage pond. What we're really worried about is that circled area. Right there is where we feel like drainage could spill over into our yard. And then combine that with problems with shade, and that would be problematic because in the wintertime, it would not melt as quickly. So we please, please ask that you take these into consideration that we can make an accommodation that fits for the community, for our family and for the city. Thank you.
J. Matt Wiegand? Sorry for my pronunciations.
Hello. They're my neighbors. We live around there too. It'll be this big giant building. It's pretty terrifying what he just showed, the visual aids. I know we're just going through the motions here. I mean, they have their fancy lawyers and it's clear this is all just going to go through. This is all just going through the motions. That's what democracy is in this country, if it ever existed in the first place. So we know that they'll undoubtedly win this, that you'll approve it, that it goes through, that it's one more warehouse out where there's a few people to push around. And, you know, a token number of us show up and we go through the motions. Well, it's better to speak here and at least force you to go through the motions.
Next is Rudy Garcia.
Hello, I'm Rudy Garcia, Reno resident. And I am also the son of Mara Garcia, whose home is right adjacent to this project. So as we've shown some diagrams earlier, and as we spoke about the wall that was going to be placed adjacent to, so the wall that was suggested to be placed right next, this is the home where we live. And this is our two-and-a-half acres, right? The wall that they're suggesting to put is right here. We, due to the grading that was also spoke about, we have some issues that we could see in the future. One is, let me show some diagrams here. This is our diagram for December 21, done by one of our architects, of how the winter solstice will take effect into this building. Once the sun rises at 7, we won't see any sun on the property. Here's the home. We won't see any sun until 9:00 PM, causing a lot of issues with ice, snow, water problems. Also, we talked a little bit about the grading. The grading that's been done here, it's going to be a pretty large amount. It's going to be, I know, 180 feet of setback is good, but they're bringing the grading up very high elevated and then a 50-foot tall building on top of that, which comes to almost 100 feet of height right in front of that property. And I can show other, for example, marches. This is how the house will be pretty much completely covered in the morning from the sun. We talked about the flooding issues or water problems that we could see is going to happen right adjacent to our home when the water goes down to this pond here. So what we suggest is either change how the buildings will be placed or do a little bit of different modifications there to the building to help us not have this issue and to not elevate the buildings as much as they are or the grading to be done, as much to not cover the sun from the home. Lastly, we have a worry that all of this in this area is residential. By putting these buildings here, we're going to cut the entrance of the residential side and be kind of hidden in the back there. What we suggest is that we here put an opening of the community so people know where the residential is and not be completely blocked by the industrial buildings. Thank you.
Michelle, do we have any additional request to speak forms on this item?
Not on this item, no.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? In three minutes, when you're done, please see Michelle and fill out one of the forms.
My name's Wes Herbst. I live in Horizon Hills. One of the issues I don't think the city of Reno's taken into consideration is, it's one of the largest cul-de-sacs. The whole reason, you know, that whole area was zoned, not only Horizon Hills, it's the largest cul-de-sac. You know, it has a rural aesthetic value to it, same way with, you know, Golden Valley, Lemon Valley. You know, they put on two acre, you know, it has a rural feel about it. And that's what's being taken away. You know, you're getting rid of the rural aesthetics. Might as well take down the largest little city in the world because we're getting rid of our rural value, basically. One of the things, one of the safety issues with Horizon Hills is they're being boxed in, especially the people above the railroad tracks. They store the 30,000-gallon propane railcars. Periodically, when the price is right, there's up to 13 railcars. And during the springtime, we get easy 70 mile an hour winds coming off of pevine. Now you have weeds and fire. And we only have one exit. That's through Seneca. And that's a major liability. It's like setting up with Paradise, California, you know, the fire issue. And all of these corporations are putting in their big buildings and we're being boxed in. There's big six-foot walls. There's no exit. Plus, you have to go across railroad track. So there's a lot of issues, not only, you know, the Lake Lemon and other issues that need to be taken into consideration. You know, it's safety factors, not only traffic. You're getting rid of the rural. Might as well take down that Reno city sign. That's all I have to say.
Wes.
Wes, if you can fill out one of those forms over there. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Okay, with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. I'd like to get us started. Commissioner Velto?
This is either for staff or the applicant. Obviously, either Kyle or the applicant. Some of those photos were pretty bad in terms of how that house would be affected. Can you kind of talk to us about how accurate were those? How would vegetation affect it? How would walls? Any comments on that, really?
So I'd just start by saying that, the Kyle Chisholm Assistant Planner, for the record. There's an ordinance in place today that requires them to be able to demonstrate that the building, because it is over 35 feet tall, isn't shadowing that residential property on December 21, or the winter solstice between 10 and 2. That's a current ordinance that we have. And from, I mean, I don't know where that information that was presented came from or how it was designed, but I'd just state that during morning hours, obviously, I mean, throughout the city, properties are going to be shadowed. When the sun's low in the sky, properties are going to be shadowed. That's why the ordinance has the hours it does. And on that particular day, it's the shortest day of the year. With regards to the building height, they are at the maximum allowed height at 40 feet. But they also provided, they greatly exceeded on that side specifically the required three-to-one setback ratio, which is pretty substantial. And it's our highest setback. And so, and the distance between the two buildings are about 158 feet. And so I, with regards to the drainage portion that was mentioned, there is, on that parking lot, there's going to be curb gutter along that to drain to that retention area to the north along Seneca. So that drainage is going to flow from those impervious surfaces along their curb and gutter system. Obviously, the benefit of not having the wall as they proposed on portions of the property is to kind of provide an additional feeling of openness. And also to help with security, kind of deter graffiti, things like that out in these rural, more rural areas that they can be, you know, unless there's eyes on these areas all the time, those kind of issues happen. So does that answer your question?
It does. I just have a quick follow-up on that. Kind of want to address that. In terms of the trees that are going to be put in, the pictures didn't show how that would look. Is there, do you have any idea how high these trees are going to be? Is it going to be, make that drastically different? Is it going to hide most of the building or this might be for the applicant if other ones doing it?
I have, in my cross-section in the PowerPoint, it shows the trees. Is that the trees you're referring to? So there are 10- Uh so they're ten-foot tall evergreens? Um and so that's kind of how it would look if you were looking um straight north, south down the property line.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Mr. Chair, Kerry. A couple of things I'd like you to talk to us about uh is the stormwater runoff. And if we could get the engineer to chime in on how much shave program's being used or utilized for this, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, why don't we, I'll have Sean from Tektonics address that first.
Sean Tubman, for the record. What questions did you have specifically regarding the?
Where's the stormwater runoff gonna go?
So stormwater. You have a buried in here. Stormwater's been the stormwater's been designed to run from the south to the north. Um I pointed backwards. South to the north. All drainage will run, that's the currently graded direction of the property. Ultimately, the property currently discharges under North Virginia Street and ultimately reaches Swan Lake. The drainage from south to north is detained in three detention slash retention facilities. The city code requirement of retention in the terminal basin is met and the additional one point three to one requirement that's been requested by the city in recent projects is also met with this design. So one point three times the required amount of retention is retained on the site um and does not leave the site. The additional runoff from larger storm events is detained and then released at the pre-existing release rate of the undeveloped site.
So this project won't affect Swan Lake, is that what I'm hearing?
This project is designed in a way that should not adversely affect Swan Lake volumetrically or from a release, a quantity, a release rate perspective.
How much of the shave program are you guys gonna use?
I don't know if Kyle can speak to that.
I'm concerned about the fifteen percent and the and the talk that it's as much as fifty percent right now.
Mike Michelle, Engineering Manager. Yeah, let me talk about sewer for a moment. So um this project will contribute to the shave program. It will not um, it's not proposed to go to the Reno Stead Treatment Plant. Based on the study that was provided, about uh I think four thousand gallons per day would be generated from this site, which is in relative terms, a very small amount. As far as how much of the shave program is left, um I will say that Public Works is the custodian of that particular issue. There is on our city website, a uh a real-time accounting of that. I will also say that um any approval of this project guarantees no capacity in any either the shave program or Reno Stead. That's something that's determined by Public Works at the time um that they pay connection There are many projects that get approved but don't get built, that don't get on an on an allocation list. This is a small generator. As far as how much shave is left, um I looked at the numbers just before the meeting, there was a little over a hundred thousand um gallons per day remaining. This is four. So um but I will say Public Works is the custodian of it. I know that the director reports to the city council periodically and does receive his direction from the council as far as how much can be allocated.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Question for the planning manager. About a month and a half ago, we uh worked on, worked on the uh shadowing ordinance and wording. Can you tell me how this falls in the new text?
This project does not fall within those changes. Those changes that we just made were related to the downtown only and this is not considered part of downtown. So this is, still meets what's within current code and was before we discussed it, which basically is if you have a building taller than thirty-five feet, you can't shade residents between the hours of ten AM and two PM on the winter solstice. So this, the shading ordinance that was just adopted has no impact on this project.
Okay.
The revision, I, excuse me, the revisions to the shading ordinance that was just adopted has not impacted what was already in code and impacts this project.
Engineer for Majestic. Have you taken a look at the elevation, the base elevation of the home on twenty-one sixty Seneca versus the build-out? I'd like to know how much elevation we're getting here.
Are you referencing the elevation, Sean Tubman for the record? Are you referencing the elevation of the the bottom of the building to the bottom of the adjacent residents?
Yes. Looking at twenty-one sixty Seneca and then looking up the hill, what what is my elevation gonna be? How my, how much footage am I gaining?
About about fifteen feet higher would be the bottom of the building to the bottom of the residence.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. There's additional questions?
I'll go again, Mr. Chair. Uh Kerry. I didn't see anything in here about uh electric car hookups.
Yes, that's a really good question. We've been working with staff. We're very eager. We changed the condition wording for number thirteen, I believe it is, uh yes. And we are going to work on RTC Smart Trips improvements. So things like labeling or designating spaces for carpooling, extending electrical lines to be able to have electric car charging stations, anything that can be done to encourage more sustainable and alternative ways to get to and from work.
And that's gonna be included in condition thirteen?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And uh if I'm, if I may, uh just address a few of the other points that came up, just in closing. Uh our building is only thirty-seven to thirty-nine feet and um so in looking at those figures, I would like you to really consider what the evergreen, two layers of evergreen trees stacked above one another. It's a significant buffer to what was shown in those images. Also, uh the images did not show and we will must comply with the shade ordinance that's in code, which is on winter solstice, uh the hours between ten AM and two PM. We will not be allowed to shade any neighboring properties. Brett, would you like to add anything?
I, unless we have a question for, we'll bring him up at that point. So um, do you have a question? I'll ask a question then. I I want to circle back to Commissioner Hawkins asked a question about the drainage and I just have, and want to understand this a little bit more because it's been talked, we haven't really had one come before us since we've done the one point three. So question on how this works. We have an existing site right now. I guess Kerry, I'll have you come up for this and then you can defer. Sorry. That moment of levity was appreciated. So I have an existing site right now that has water that would land upon it and both infiltrate and sheet flow across. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So under this proposal, I'm, you're proposing to cover a large portion of the site that would normally both infiltrate and runoff.
Correct.
So that needs to be, I'm just, I'm trying to get this understood both for myself and and everybody else out here. There's a certain amount of water that comes off of that site currently when there's moisture. When we reduce the ability for that to infiltrate over the areas of impervious surface and building, how is that addressed?
The retention detention ponds are meant to capture any water that would be running off impervious surface and then encourage infiltration. I wanna defer to our engineer to give a more specific answer. We actually had a really good talk about sort of the technical existing conditions. So I think he might be able to add a little more to this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Sean Tubman, for the record. Your assessment of the situation is is correct. So under existing conditions, there's some portion of water that infiltrates while twitting across the site during a storm event and an amount that does not and runs off the site completely and leaves it. So from a design perspective, the engineering design looks at the existing site and quantifies how much water is running off the site currently and how much is staying on the site. And then our proposed design, where we're increasing impervious surface, which doesn't have the capacity to infiltrate, we provide the retention detention basins. The retention component is an amount of water that's held in the basins, is not able to be released and infiltrates, and that mimics the pre-existing condition infiltration. And there's a portion that's detained and that's due to the increased amount, the increased speed at which the water runs off. So it holds the water for a temporary amount of time and then releases it at the same rate that it would run off in the existing condition.
So the understanding of the water that's in, that's held in those either for retention or detention, uh the intent of those is to allow the water to infiltrate or is it to evaporate or is it to do both?
The intent is for it to infiltrate. Their design, we we had a geotechnical engineer go out and measure existing infiltration rates in the areas of the of the basins and utilize those values with factor of safety to quantify how much we can retain and therefore infiltrate. And that amount of water is not allowed to leave the site. Only a portion of water is allowed to leave the site and it's only allowed to leave above the retention volume at a reduced rate than what it's flowing into the basins.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Kyle, question for you on the the building height conversation that we're having. And I appreciate Kerry clarifying the actual height of the building being under code. The question I have is that building height that we've got of thirty-seven feet, per the comment that was asked before by Commissioner Hawkins, is fifteen feet above the current grade at that or in that general vicinity. So the existing residence is at roughly the same grade running east-west as that portion of the site, which is getting filled per the cuts and fills. So am I understanding it correctly that it doesn't matter what the current grade elevation is? The height of the building is measured off of whatever the final grade is of the grading plan?
Uh that's correct. Um your assumption is correct. That's how building height's measured from from the grade established for the for the building. Um and so it wa, not from the existing current grade. And if I understand the question correctly. And so there's also a um a requirement, and I meant to go over it in my PowerPoint, but within twenty, there's a code requirement that within twenty feet of that residential property line, that no fill exists um higher or greater than that existing grade of that residential property can take place. So no, no fill. Um and so the plans as proposed, there's a twenty-foot area adjacent to that property line that has no fill. Um and so that that's required by code. Um and so they've, they've demonstrated that. And at that point, it, instead of just having a two to one slope up to their building parking lot, um as you would see on a lot of similar pro, um projects where they need to fill this much, they've done a a tiered retaining wall bench system with enhanced evergreen plantings, which um in my opinion really breaks up the 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 visual, um the visual issue that you can have with that with that grade. Instead of just a dirt slope or even a dirt slope revegetated, which is common, they've went.
So then the next question, and I'm, I'm looking at, I was looking at that plan that you gave for the cuts and the fills. And it's interesting because the area of fill, which granted is ten feet or more, is significantly greater than the area of cuts, which I know is twenty feet or more. Um I'll ask the engineer in a moment in terms of the balanced site, but when I'm looking at the requirement for uh the SUP for grading, the question is, you know, necessary to provide safe and adequate access to the development. And I guess my question is, looks like we're making the access to the development harder because of all the grading, because we're increasing the height of the building in relation to Virginia Street. So my question is, I would expect a site like this, especially with the concerns of the residential adjacency, to be lower. So maybe the the engineer can explain if we're looking at a balance of cut and fill, if we've got an excess of fill, or if there's a reason why the the elevation chosen for the buildings uh is significantly higher than the current elevation of North Virginia Street.
Yeah, I'll I'll defer to the applicant's engineer on that.
Thank you. Hopefully you listened to the question, so I don't have to restate.
I already had it out. similar to the exhibit that Kyle showed, uh that was specifically regarding the portions of cut and fill that trigger triggered the SUP. So that's portions of fill that are greater than ten feet and cuts that are greater than twenty feet. So the cut portion on that was not as indicative because it was only showing really deep cuts. So the site is currently balanced and that was one of the primary goals of of the layout. It's not showing up great on the projector here, but the the portions in blue are the areas in fill and the portions in red are the areas of cut. And it's, we've done everything we can to minimize how much of either one of those we have. Without bringing the site up from the grade on Virginia Street, we would have incredibly deep cuts in the rear of the site. We're sloping the buildings from north to south in an attempt to help mimic natural grade and provide some additional uh relief from the cut and fill issues. But with as much grade change as there is across the site, uh we're, we're gonna wind up with some significant fills in the front and some significant cuts in the back. Based on the the other element that limited our grading is the code required, you know, maximum slopes of our driveways.
So you brought up something and maybe I missed it in there. So you've got, you're building slopes, you have various heights of floors in the building?
That's correct. The northernmost portion, portions of the building will be lower than the southernmost portion. It's not a significant, it's not an incredibly significant slope, but it's a half percent, it's a minimally noticeable.
Your slab is sloped or you're stepping the floor?
The slab is sloped.
Commissioner, there's additional questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Commissioner Hawkins. I was disturbed, uh this goes to the engineer. I was disturbed to hear that there could be a possibility of runoff if the detention or retention pond did not function correctly. And my question to you is, why don't we uh condition this thing that we do a certain amount of perk tests in the area so you know where the infiltration is gonna take place?
Well, the infiltration testing that was done was in the location that the basins are proposed. And additional testing can be done. I mean, uh when it comes to soils, I, I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but there's, there's, they're not very homogeneous. It it changes where you go. And so the factor of safety that we apply is And so, the factor of safety that we apply is accounting for the potential for the soils to clog over time and some lack of continuity. But we're, we're working off of standard information is, you know, one, maybe two infiltration tests per, per detention basin, detention-retention basin.
Yeah, but your, your warehouse isn't going to be standard. This is unique. I'm expecting unique out of you guys. I'd like to see some perk going on where you're going to have a retention pond, because I don't want to hear from Swan Lake that we've got water running down the road toward them.
Yep.
Can't, can't, it's got to be captured right there at the source. Can't roll down into Swan Lake.
And I, I can't speak to any condition on it, obviously.
Oh, yeah, please.
I'll defer to Kyle.
Thanks. If I could just provide a little bit of clarity on the conditions. So, we currently have a condition that requires them to provide a final hydrology report. And I just confirmed with our engineering manager that that will, that will also have to include a final percolation test.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Or discussion about this? Commissioner Hawkins?
I have one. I see the traffic man's here. I'd like to get his take on this project. Don't want to make your trip, trip a wasted time coming down here, so I'd like to hear what you have to say about the, the road coming in, road going out, traffic, what we're expected to see in that area.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Paul Saleggi is my name, prepared the traffic report. This project is not a high-traffic generator. It didn't generate enough traffic to trigger the need for a traffic study, but the developers wanted to make sure that the, their issues were fully disclosed, and what they were going to do was well documented. And so, they hired me, and we prepared a traffic report. The findings show that the two driveways function well, level of service A and B. There's a condition about a turn lane, that, and the developer is comfortable with that. So, overall, the, the, the traffic issues of this report are very straightforward, they're positive, and we support the staff. So, I feel like the issues are, are well addressed and, and completely resolved.
Yeah, but like everything we look at in the last couple of years that I've been involved with, we have something going in here that's 250 homes. We have another one, 230, and they just don't meet the trigger to do anything. And this falls right in that category. We have all these warehouses on, let's call it Warehouse Row, North Virginia. And nobody's done a traffic study, because nobody seems to meet the trigger to do that. Well, it's time we need, we need to start looking at this and say, where's the trigger? Why aren't we doing a traffic report? But no, we have a warehouse here that just doesn't quite meet that trigger, and this one over here, and then what you're telling me, nothing meets it. And, and I'm saying, we've got a multitude of warehouses, that none of them probably meet the trigger, but collectively, they do. And we've got to get past that. We, we've got to rectify the problem.
Well, in this case, if I could add, here, here, and this might be a point that could be annoying to you, but we, there are criteria that tell you when you need to put a left turn lane in at driveways. And it's a federally established criteria. And the reason that is in there is that, you know, why not put a left turn lane everywhere? And the answer is that you don't want to pave the whole world. It's expensive to build, and it's expensive to maintain. So, there are these federally established criteria that tell you when you need a turn lane. My study says that we don't need a turn lane. The engineering department made a condition that, that a turn lane should be constructed. And that was primarily driven by the plan that RTC has in time to widen Virginia Street to a four-lane road. So, because of that, in cooperation with, with impact fee waivers, we're, we're cooperative with that condition. So, we are attempting to go above and beyond the cause. We're coordinating with multi-level jurisdictional issues with the city, RTC, and so forth. So, we're attempting to do what, what you're seeking for, going above the minimums and, and not shave it to the very, the bottom of acceptable. We're attempting to, to fully disclose and to mitigate as we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Veltou.
Question for Kyle. What would be, so the project sites, X amount of feet above wherever it currently is now, and then the buildings, X amount of feet above that. If you were to combine those two numbers, how far would the project need to be from the home to fit within the code?
Michelle, would you mind going back to my PowerPoint? Again, sorry. I, I need to look at this cross-section again real quick to put it in perspective for me, but, oh, there it is. And I can't read those numbers. So, what I can tell you is, is that it's a three-to-one requirement. The current building height, and given with this conversation that we've had tonight, it's from the finished grade, not from existing grade. That's where the building height is measured. So, at their current building height, or actually calculated at 40 feet, which is, would be the max, the setback requirement's 85 feet. They've provided 118 feet. I don't, I, I don't have, let me see if I can, I think it's about... So, they were crunching the numbers back here behind me, and the applicant's engineer told me another 45 feet.
On top of what?
Well, just assuming the 15-foot grade change.
Can you come up to, just come up and...
Since we're referring to how, how much higher the, the bottom of the building is above existing grade, it's 15 feet. So, an extra 15 feet at a three-to-one setback would require an additional 45 feet beyond the...
85?
Yeah.
For a total of...
I concur with that.
Does that answer your question?
It, it, that's just for clarification. So, the, the distance right now is 118 feet?
Correct.
Okay, and all that's required is...
85.
Okay. Thanks.
And we're, and just to be clear, though, we are talking about the west, I'm talking about the western boundary. The eastern boundary is different. So, just so you know.
Commissioners, additional questions? Or discussion, comments? Mr. Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at findings E and F, and I think there's been great questions related to those findings, and I think we've gotten a lot of information out of staff and, and the applicant relative to those. I think it's kind of an interesting scenario, and we see this a lot at Planning Commission, that a project is before us that fits within the confines of the code, that goes above and beyond the code. That's what we ask of applicants to do and staff to evaluate. Even if a project is within our code requirements, there is still the potential for it to, in the case of finding F, constitute a nuisance to area properties. It's the degree to which it creates that nuisance. And I think that it will change the characteristics of the surrounding residential area. It's going to be a change. Just like projects in the North Valleys have created a change to Swan Lake. It has the potential to do that, too, with runoff. Every type of development that goes in is changing the characteristics of the landscape. The degree to which it creates that nuisance and that finding trigger to be able to make it or don't is different in every project that we see at Planning Commission. Some, it's easy to say, yes, it will. Some, it's easy to say, no, it won't. For me, this fits within the code very well. It goes above and beyond. I think it's, the applicant has done a good job. At the same time, it's going to affect surrounding properties. That, I think, an important point, and this is something that we see when developments come in at the boundary of the city, is there's a representation issue of the effects being felt on residents in unincorporated Washoe County that don't have a voice necessarily in what we as a city incorporate as our code and our standards for mitigating those potential nuisance on area property. So, I just wanted to say where I'm at, Mr. Chairman, relative to those findings. I'd appreciate some additional discussion from the rest of the commission on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Commissioners, additional comments? Commissioner Hawkins? Sorry, I thought you were reaching for your button.
But I will.
Okay.
I have to go along with Commissioner Gower on the nuisance part. I didn't take a look at that before, but he brings up a good, a good point about the nuisance of the building and the grade, and so, I've got to go that route, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. It's an interesting, Commissioner Johnson, it's an interesting situation, because I think, you know, I've run into this before, it's been brought up, I've brought it up a number of times before with the scale, and, and I have concerns, and I think the IC zoning, and part of the reason why I supported the IC zoning, is that it's not, it's not the IB zoning, it's not the, the full, it's not even the MU that was up before, where the heights are quite a bit higher. I mean, this is a, a lower, lower scale, it's a lower intensity in the building, as commissioners have pointed out, and staff has pointed out, it meets that requirement. But having said that, it meets that requirement while sitting on an artificial plinth of 15 feet. And yes, I used an architectural term, plinth, because I don't get to do that very often. And that's what concerns me. I think that's where, that's where I, I go back, not so much with the nuisance one on, on item F, but I'm looking at item, you know, finding E, and it's the, the site location and scale, and, you know, and one of those being the height. And I think that the overall size and scale of the project is probably in keeping with zone and with code. But based on its proximity to residents, there's a scale issue here that makes that finding a lot harder for me to make, because it's the scale of the building plus the scale of the hillside, which is not a hillside, it's a stepped terrace, which I do think is the appropriate way to address that. And, and really, that was my, the reasons for my questions, and I appreciate seeing the actual cut and fill map, because the one that's in, you know, our packet makes it look as if we're, we aren't balancing the site, and we're just building this thing up, when in reality, they're cutting into the hillside just as much. But I think I'm still, I'm still struggling making that finding, just because of the scale that the building takes on based on the grading that it requires, which is part of then the second special use permit finding, whether or not the grades are required for adequate access to the site. And that, I guess, is a, a question of the design. It's probably not required if the building is oriented in a different way, but it is required based on the way the building is oriented now. So, I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Gower. I think you summed it up quite well, that I'm staring at a project that addresses all of the concerns that we have for industrial-scale development, with the truck bays being in the middle, with the landscape screening all the way around, with the retention that's being provided. But there's just that additional finding that in order to make all of that work, creates a situation that seems to be somewhat focused on this particular project, unlike others that we've had. So, I think that's the, that's the finding that I'm struggling with. So, those are my comments. I've got a couple there. Commissioners, Commissioner Veltou.
I, I definitely respect that perspective. Commissioner Johnson, I, I guess the, kind of the reason why I was asking the question about how high the building, how close the building would be, is because that kind of helps me understand the scale. And if it were just cut flat, the building could be a lot closer, and it seems like a lot of the adverse effects to the neighbors would be basically the same. Like, doing the math, it seems like the building might be a few feet higher with the grading that's done. But I don't necessarily think, I kind of agree with Commissioner Gower in that it's not as bad as what could be there. They've done a lot of good, they've done a lot of things to kind of mitigate the concerns, and they fit within the zoning code. So, I'm kind of stuck thinking that it's permissible based on what we've seen. That's just kind of where I'm at, though.
Commissioner Levis?
Yeah, Commissioner Levis, I, I appreciate the comments, and, and they really make me consider it. And I guess, given what it could be under the current zoning versus what we have, I think that they've, they've taken a lot of steps to mitigate. And, and, and I can appreciate the comments, Commissioner Gower in particular, and, and they're certainly enlightening. But I think that this has taken great steps to be better than it, better than it, than it was, just to go to building permit under, under what they could do now. To say that this could be residence, and it could be a lot taller, there's not going to be some high-rise tower out there with the condominiums, let's be real. So, that, I, I don't know if that argument really flies either, that it could be that much worse, and it could be that much more shadowing. So, when you look at the reality where it is, and what it, what it could be versus what it realistically could be, I think they've taken a lot of steps within the trucks in the interior. And it, this is a tough one, but I, I think that, I think that I could make the findings.
Commissioners, additional comments? Discussion? More motion? Remember, I said I'm talking less this year, so... One thing I will say in response to both comments from Commissioner Levis, Commissioner Veltou, I respect the, the idea that, and I think what you're stating is exactly what Commissioner Gower stated, is that, you know, you're looking at this with respect to the zoning code, and this meeting the zoning code. There's a lot of projects that meet the zoning code, a lot of projects that meet the development code. The reason that this is before us for a special use permit is because it has a unique situation of residential adjacency, and that's why we have the findings to make. We, as the Planning Commission, are looking at these findings and not necessarily saying we can make the finding because it, code says that it meets that. Reason for the special use permit, and this was the discussion I pointed out during the zoning discussion, is that the special use permit is because we're going to be running into individual situations like this. We're going to be running into cases where we have interface with rural areas, with county areas, that are different than places that are directly in the middle of town. So, I appreciate the statements that are being made in your reasons for looking at it, but the whole thing that I want to just put on the record is that we are asked to make the findings. So, if you can make the findings because the code says they're there, that's acceptable. If you can't make the findings, even though it's meeting code, that's the other reason for looking at it from the special use permit standpoint. So, that's why I'm struggling with it. I think that's why Commissioner Gower started off our discussion along those lines, that this is a, a situation of a project that is going beyond the code, but is it still also meeting all the requirements for this particular site? And that's what my struggle is with. And so, this is one time where I'm happy where I'm not the one that has to be. I can just turn it over to you guys and let you talk about it. And now, in keeping with the new year, I'm going to stop talking and ask for either discussion or a motion.
Commissioner Levis, I guess, I said I could make findings. It doesn't sound like it's probably really going to go, but I'll make the motion. In case number LDC 20-00030... In case number LDC 20-00030, Majestic Liberty, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make the findings.
Commissioner Velto, second?
I have a motion from Commissioner Levis, second from Commissioner Velto. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So that's Commissioner Levis and Commissioner Velto in favor, Commissioner Gower, Commissioner Hawkins, and Commissioner Johnson opposed. Motion does not pass based on a three to two vote. You're looking at, Angela, you're looking at the attorneys? I believe there's only one.
I was going to ask, do they need to, since that motion did not pass, do they need to make another motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just also clarify something on the, on the, on the next motion that is made just in respect to the applicant's request for the modified conditions? If we can clarify if that's going to be included as such or not?
Okay. Would you like that as a part of the motion that's already been made?
Yeah, it should be.
So I'll ask Commissioner Levis and Commissioner Velto if the motion is made based on the requested modifications to the two conditions from the applicant?
Yes, my motion was based on the amendments.
All right. So we have the initial motion for approval fails by a three to two vote. And we need a motion in the opposite direction?
Yes. Yes, and some clarification on the findings that the commission members are unable to make, please.
Okay, understood.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. In the case of LDC 20-00030, Majestic Liberty, based on my inability to make findings E and F, and those two, I move to deny the special use permit. Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment to, relative to my first comment, if you wouldn't mind. You know, I think it's a very sort of narrow decision on this one of the, because, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, very well, that we're looking at this special use permit and those specific findings, even though this meets really very well the, the intent of the code, from my perspective, I am seeing the potential for impacts on adjacent residences, which are the findings that were required to make as part of this special use permit. So from my perspective, those findings relative to scale of the proposed project adjacent to those residences, and the potential for the creation of environmental impacts, both for the neighboring residences on Seneca and for the area generally in the North Valleys, and that's something that I would just say is completely beyond the control of the applicant, and it's not fair to you that the city is just generally dealing with some, some issues there. So that's why I can't make those findings, and I hope for the City Council and for legal that that's a sufficient explanation.
Good, this is Carl Hall City Attorney. I'm, I'm also requesting, I know that your motion deals with the special use permit regarding residential adjacency. With respect to the cuts and fills special use permit, are you able to make or unable to make either finding A or B?
Scrolling to those findings.
So A, finding A for special use permit for cuts and fills would be the slopes can be treated in a manner which does not create negative visual impacts. Finding B is the grading is necessary to provide safe and adequate access to the development. So I would just like some clarification on your findings with respect to the cuts and fills.
So in response to that, I can make those findings, and I was struggling with finding B initially, but based on the explanation that the engineer provided of the balance of the cuts and fills outside of the, the SUP, I, I can make that finding. So if you want a separate motion for that one, I can, I can do that, if that's something that you want.
It wasn't really noticed that way. It was, basically, it's a special use permit for two reasons. I don't know that we've broken it up that way before.
No, I'm just looking for some clarification on those, on those findings. So if you can't make the special use permit findings, generally for the residential adjacency, I think that would terminate the project in any event, so.
So I have a motion that meets the satisfaction of the City Attorney. So I'm looking for a second.
Point of order? Can you repeat that, the motion?
Uh, can I repeat the motion?
Yes.
So Commissioner Gower has made a motion to deny, is that the proper term that you used?
What I used?
Okay. To deny the special use permit based on inability to make the findings. So that's the motion. Then I said I need a second on that motion.
Commissioner Hawkins, second?
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion on that?
I'm going to chime in just because it hasn't been touched on, also with respect to the same findings. One of the issues that has been brought up with respect to the warehouse aspect and the industrial aspect of this, and I think this is something that was part of the master plan, was looking at industrial uses out there. I think that this is definitely in keeping with the master plan as a result of that. And I don't think that, you know, we're looking at this and these findings as an individual project. I think there's a project on this site that meets all of the requirements of this zone that are in keeping with the master plan. But I think because of the requirements for the special use permit and the findings that need to be made based on the special use permit, it appears, what I'm hearing and what I'm thinking is that this project, although meeting code, doesn't quite meet the findings, but I'm not saying that industrial is not the appropriate use for this, that a warehouse or a large-scale building of this sort. I'm not, my response to this is not due to my inability to meet the findings for this type of building, it's for this particular design on this site, for the scale in, in finding E. And I just wanted that on my discussion on the record, that it's not a problem with the, the use. So Commissioner Gower?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add on to that, and I think that's an important point, that in, in our position as a commissioner, at least from my perspective, is we're reacting to a proposal that's put in front of us. And that proposal, as designed and as proposed to us, for me, I could not make those two findings. And I don't think that we need to be in a position to redesign a project from the dais, and we've gotten into this do loop before, where we try to condition ourselves into approving a project. And frankly, I didn't want to go there tonight. I think that, I agree with you. I think that industrial use can be, is an appropriate use on this parcel, but the proposal that was presented tonight didn't allow me to make those findings. So I, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think that's a really important point to get onto the record when this gets appealed to the council, that we shouldn't be designing projects from the dais.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
A motion carries three to two. Commissioner Gower, Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Johnson in favor of the denial, Commissioner Velto and Commissioner Levis opposed to the denial. Checking with legal? Are we good? Okay.
Yes.
That was what I needed to know. So with that, I will read into the record the appeal process. Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. And if the 10th calendar day falls on a weekend or holiday when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed on the next business day. With that, I am going to move on to item 5.3, case number LDC 20-00026, North Virginia zoning map amendment. And I will ask the applicant to take a brief moment to allow the room to clear before he starts, so we can hear him clearly. All right, Andy, I think you're good.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers representing the applicant for the North Virginia zoning map amendment. This property is located on, more or less, on the southeast quadrant of Stead Boulevard and US 3095 and, and North Virginia Street. The request is a zoning map amendment from mixed-use North Virginia Transit Corridor to industrial commercial. The site is an assemblage of a number of different properties. The zone change in total contains 14 parcels totaling just over 30 acres. And, and, and the existing uses on the site, it's a kind of a hodgepodge of uses, there's some existing manufactured homes, some, we'll call them outdoor storage facilities, as well as several vacant parcels. As has been mentioned previously tonight, this area in particular, up, up North Virginia and up 395, has been identified in the new Reimagine Reno as an area that's appropriate for industrial uses. As such, this area was changed from special planning area, our mixed-use corridor, North Virginia Transit Corridor in the master plan, to industrial. It is identified in the master plan as a quote targeted employment area, and is intended to promote industrial uses. The existing zoning then is, is not necessarily consistent with that vision moving forward. There are a number of existing industrial and industrial, commercial, commercially zoned properties in the area. Specifically requested here is the IC zoning. Directly to the east of us is existing IC zoning. To the south, there is some mixed use, but across Virginia Street, there's both I industrial as well as industrial commercial. And then to the west of us is a, on this property here, this kind of ax-shaped property, was recently approved to be changed to industrial commercial. So we're sort of filling out a larger portion of that industrial commercial along this corridor and establishing that vision that was brought forth in Reimagine Reno. Very short presentation, as this property is, is bringing the property more into, into conformance with Reimagine Reno. The uses that are, are allowed in industrial commercial or mixed use are actually very similar. The design standards are different and would facilitate future industrial development of this property in the future. So with that, ample time left to answer any questions and, and provide any rebuttal to any public comment that would be provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. We'll bring you back with questions. Next, we'll hear from staff. Nate, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The applicant's representative gave a thorough overview of the request. Staff concurs with the presentation. The change to the industrial commercial zone would, would bring the, the 14 parcels into conformance with the industrial master plan designation on the site. Staff can make the applicable findings and is available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nathan. Before I open for public comment, I'll ask Commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, I communicated briefly with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins looked at the layout of the property and spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Velto, the same?
Commissioner Johnson, I conversed with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Levis, I spoke with the applicant's representative and visited the site.
With that, I have a request to speak for him on this item from Tim Fada.
Tim Fada for the record. Thank you again. I guess in my opening statement, I said that you're going to hear proposals from staff, that all of these things are good, and I guess you approve, and the whole works. We saw tonight where you guys did a pretty good job of checking and, and looking and see what happens to the adjacent properties. Okay? The, the shadowing out of this person's property with a 54-foot building? What was not addressed in that is they're filling in a natural drainage. What's happening to the drainage west of it? Where does that water go during a storm? Okay? That normally would have went through the drainage? We didn't answer that question. It's going to end up in Mr. Garcia's yard. And the smoke and mirrors with the, with the trucks in the turn lane? Hey, gentlemen and ladies, 100 trucks parking in there. 100 trucks parking. You think they just park there? It's a warehouse facility. You mean the guy's going to tell me that we're going to load the warehouse? The trucks are going to sit there, it's just going to be parking? 100 trucks in and out of there? There's going to be a lot of truck traffic in there, in and out every day, that these other people in that street is not going to be capable of. Again, like I said before, solve the problem that we already have. The runoff, the same thing with this property we're talking about right now that's up here. It's going to have runoff issues, it's going to have sewer issues, the same thing. I'm going to task you guys, I really am. Which one of you will stand up and, from the deep part of your heart, all truth and honesty, put a moratorium on building in the Lemon Valley, North Valleys area until the infrastructure is fixed, till the sewer is fixed, till we actually have a storm drain system? This, this warehouse in this tension, detention ponds, it's a bunch of smoke and mirrors. The water can't stay there. They make, make them release it in seven days. The engineer wasn't even sure of what was going on. So how can we ask these people to make plans and build buildings when we have nothing to take care of it for them? Where's the water end up? Swan Lake flooding other people out. Gentlemen, it's up to you. You're part of the people that can say, hey, we need to put a stop to this. And I, I task you. I don't think that one of you is really man enough to go ahead and say, hey, we got to really look at this. This is an issue that we're going to be faced with until something's done. We've been coming here for two and a half years, asking you to take care of the issues, and it's in your ballpark. There's a regional plan, we want to see everything built, but we want to do it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any additional requests to speak for on this item?
No, we don't.
Anyone else?
Identify one, two, and three.
Come on up, Tammy.
I know you're there.
Yeah, I know.
I had you for public comment, item one and item two. So you filled out three of them?
I filled out three, one, two, and three. Oh, well, I'll do another one. Okay. Anyway, Tammy holds still Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. Thank you for really listening over the last two years regarding some of the issues of Swan Lake. It was different listening to you guys talk tonight instead of just rubber stamping, and I appreciate that, wholeheartedly. I know it's not easy to be where you're at. I know it's hard to have to hear me all the time. I know how much my husband hates to hear me. I know how much I hate to hear myself, but nobody else is going to do it. And if I have to keep pressuring to get the right things done, I'm going to keep screaming. Because you can't take what was back in 2018, 3,000 acres of land, and make it impervious, and run it straight to an 1,800-acre lake, and expect that it's not going to overflow when you're adding affluent from your plant and from Washoe County. The number I gave you today was only for Washoe County. You know, City of Reno is so worried about its image, and it makes sure that the citizens of the City of Reno have shopping and health care and all this other stuff, but yet, when it comes to the North Valleys, it shove as many homes in as you can, and shove as many industrial buildings as you can in, and not have the shopping, not have the family entertainment. And it is time for you to step up and say, this needs to be balanced. You want to build, follow what we need. Instead of listening to the developers. This city is heavily This city is heavily cited to the developers and to the developers' representatives, and it's not looking at the citizens unincorporated or the citizens of the City of Reno that are in the City of Reno up north. And you're hurting us all. And it's time to change it. This zone change to make it totally 100% industrial, so they can put in another warehouse when we don't have the traffic taken care of, we don't have the effluent taken care of, we don't have the stormwater taken care of, and we definitely don't have any family entertainment up there, and our shopping is minimal. You know, look at it. Would you like to live there with the way that you're allowing things to go? I doubt it. And it's time to change. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Did you find that extra form, Michelle?
No, I only have three for you.
Thanks, Tammy. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? I see none, and we'll bring it back to the Commission for questions. I'd like to get us started. Questions or discussion, comments? I got one question, if you're not going to ask a question.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just ask, I want to ask the same question that I asked before. So we saw this in item one this evening, where we were looking at a zone change from mixed-use to industrial commercial. As I understand it, items allowable for use in industrial commercial are also allowable by and large in the mixed-use zoning, correct?
Nathan Gilbert, for the record, they are almost identical. There's about two uses that are different between the two zones.
Okay, so the uses are the same, but the design standards are different?
The design standards are different.
Okay. So under this particular change, last time it was residential adjacency that would trigger a special use permit for any development that would occur based on the property. We don't have that on this one? So is there a difference in terms of items that would be proposed there that would need to come before us? Is it just cuts and fills?
That's correct, and I should have mentioned that in my presentation. Mr. Fada mentioned a project. Staff did receive a project that's currently under review. It's a special use permit for two major drainageways disturbances which are on the site. Staff is currently reviewing that. The planning commission, if things go on schedule, would anticipate to hear that in a February public hearing.
Okay. And that, because this is disturbance of a major drainageway, that's independent of the zoning in terms of it would have to come, it would have to come before this body for a special use permit?
That's correct. Under the existing and proposed zones, any disturbance of the two major drainageways on the sites would require a special use permit approval.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarified. Any additional questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
That was one of my options.
Okay. The case of LDC 20-00026, North Virginia zoning map amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously as a recommendation to council. Moving on, next item on the agenda, item six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Mr. Gower?
Mr. Chairman, we have a schools subcommittee meeting next week, which I'm thrilled to go to, and then our next meeting, regular meeting, is not until the following week.
Okay. Thank you. I was glad to see my name wasn't on the school's subcommittee.
We'll trade you.
You can't. I have a conflict of interest. Next item, staff announcements. Angela.
Good evening, Angela Foose, Planning Manager. Just an update, City Council met yesterday, and this was the first meeting post-holidays. Couple of big things I wanted to let you know. The Bella Vista PUD, which was before the planning commission, gosh, probably 10 months ago, yesterday it was the second reading and it was denied. So at this point, the appeal process would, there is no appeal process. It would have to go to the courts, or they can build the existing development as is outlined within the current PUD. The innovation zone change was up for first reading that was approved. The Councilwoman Jordan initiated a text amendment to the Mortenson-Garson Overlay District, and she identified very specific things that she wanted opened up. A lot of this had to do with the projects that you've been seeing over the past, really, two years. You know, there's been a lot of questions. There's a lot of gray areas within the overlay district, and so she's identified some specific things that she would like looked at and clarified, so we don't have these gray areas. So she initiated that. Staff will be bringing that to Planning Commission in the near, probably, three or four months, I'm guessing. We will have to go to the NAB and the CAB before it comes before you, so expect that here in a couple of months. And then also one other item, Prado. Councilwoman Breckus asked for an update on where we're at with Prado. This group, the planning commission, denied Prado. It was scheduled for City Council and was continued to an item in June. Prior to that meeting in June, the applicant asked for a continuance for up to 12 months. So they are basically on hold for 12 months while they work with some of the regional agencies, including RTC, Washoe County, and City of Reno, to see if they can be part of the solution related to stormwater management. So that is not reopening the handbook. They've just asked for an extension so that they can meet with these other jurisdictions and look at some of the land they have within their PUD to see if there's anything they can do to contribute to solving that stormwater issue. So at some point, it will go back to City Council for their vote, and if it changes, like I said, that's not up for discussion at this point. They haven't proposed any changes to the handbook. All of their discussions have been more at the stormwater management level. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number eight, Commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, I don't know if this is an agenda item or just more of an administrative item, but it seems like about 7:00 the guest Wi-Fi is turned off, and could we, I don't know if we could get that extended through the meetings, or if we could get passwords to the city Reno Wi-Fi?
Good to know. We'll look into that.
Yeah. As we go to these electronic reports, that's pretty important to have that access.
All right. Thank you. Next item, number nine, public comment. For public comment on any action item or any general public comment, Michelle, do we have any requests to speak for on this item?
No, I do not.
Anyone left wishing to make public comment on this item? I'm going to say no. Close that and bring it back to item 10, adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.